...location will be led by Reverend Michael Mathis.
Father, this evening. We're just about sorry, I apologize. It takes just a moment for the broadcast to start on the Facebook. Give me one moment, I'll give you a.
Start all over.
Sorry about that.
All right, let's try run.
We are live now on Facebook.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our special community meeting. I am Jackie Warner, Mayor of Hope Mills, and we have with us tonight several members of our community and our county and our state representatives. We will have a roll call, but prior to that, we'd like to open this meeting with a special indication led by Reverend Michael Mathis.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh Lord God Almighty, we are grateful for this evening and we thank you for your omnipresence in the lives of all of humanity. And as we come this evening, oh Lord, if you see anything that would hinder us from receiving your divine wisdom and guidance, Lord, we ask that you would remove it and forgive us in Jesus' name. And in this hour, oh Lord, we come before you, God, believing that you have always been the keeper of our lives. And now as we come together on Zoom and the social media, Father, we know that you're here. And we asking you, God, to lead and guide us, endow us as you have in time past with your godly wisdom, oh Lord, and the instructions that you would have us to do that we can better protect your people. We thank you for you alone are God, and we have always been able to trust and depend on you. And we pray for our leaders all over this state and all over this nation. Now, Lord, victory is in your hands, and so we expect that you would endow and allow us to experience the victory that you have for America and this world in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to do a roll call of who we have with us. So I guess I'll ask our person in charge if you can open it so that each person can identify themselves.
Joel Lachardo, Chief of Police.
Melissa Adams, Town Manager for the Town of Hope Mills.
Joanna McCray, Mayor Pro Tem for the Town of Hope Mills.
Jane Starling with the Town of Hope Mills.
Dr. Anthony Way with the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission.
Eric Olson, Vice Chair of the Cumberland Fayetteville Human Relations Commission.
My name's Tara Blue, and I'm a resident and activist in Hope Mills.
And I'm Senator Kirk Devier, representing District 19, Cumberland County.
Angel Wrightlinier, Assistant City Manager, Fayetteville.
Tony Storey, candidate for County Commissioner, District 2, Hope Mills resident.
Laura Hardy with Senator Kirk Devier campaign.
I think that's everyone, Mayor.
Okay, I want to thank everyone that is here this evening and participating in this. We do have some discussion topics that were presented to us. And those discussion topics, we hope that we can generate some information and also give everyone an opportunity to participate in. And we'll recognize you by an orderly fashion, sort of like what we did with the roll call, if you do have something to speak about. Our first topic was how the system works, where the police, common county, the DA, judges, and their roles, as well as state representatives' roles in criminal justice reform. And because I know and have found that Senator Devier and along with our Mayor Pro Tem has already been involved in some discussions such as these, I'd like at this time to turn it over to Senator Devier and let him cover this topic if he will.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, and thank you to the Mayor Pro Tem for helping set this up. And we're just glad to be a part of it and help facilitate in any way that we can. When we look at the different roles, there's some very distinct roles, as you know. Whether you look at the Sheriff's Office or the Police Department, you know, they have their own unique roles. And I'm sure that our, the police and law enforcement officials that are on the call will discuss those. But they have specifically when it comes to, to serve and protect and of course, enforce the laws. Our judges have a very unique role in this environment. As you look at, you know, they have to weigh the law and be fair and balanced as they're approaching their decisions in these. And a lot of them have latitude to do some things within the court systems. But they are very restricted as it comes to sentencing guidelines and those types of things. Our DA has quite an amount of ability and authority across our community. At the end of the day, the DA is the one that decides whether someone will be charged. And so that carries a weight all on its own. When you look at your city or municipal and county elected officials, I believe we have some of them on the call as well. And they have some specific roles as it pertains to their local law enforcement policies and procedures and what they do in regards to race relations within their own municipalities or county. At the state level, we in the House and the Senate make laws. And so the, you know, we have a very wide latitude to do different things. And specifically, when you look at justice reform, there's a lot of areas that have been changed, discussed over the last several years, whether it's around police accountability or expungement or sentencing guidelines or power to judges, expanded powers for different law enforcement or district attorneys, as well as what we're doing for people once they're incarcerated, as well as when they come out of incarceration into some type of reentry program. So we have a lot of flexibility and a lot of ability to shape the laws as it pertains to criminal justice or justice reform across our state. I won't give my opinion at this point, I'll just leave that as the framework as far as the system. And hopefully I'll get an opportunity to speak a little bit to the opinion. But understand that all the players that I just mentioned make up a system. And that's our justice system across the state of North Carolina. You know, you can factor in some other players as well at the state level when you look at the Attorney General and some others. But together, they have to work in tandem to create a fair and just system for all our citizens, is what I truly believe. So with that, Mayor Warner, I will turn it back over to you. I hope I succeeded in setting up the conversation.
Thank you, did a great job. Is there anyone that would have an opinion or would like to offer something at this point? Or any questions you'd like to ask Senator Devier? Okay, the next item on our agenda, and it's really, there's two items that are kind of put together. And one is the police and community relations, and then the police initiative, which parts of eight can't wait are we currently practicing? And what can be added? And because we're doing this as Hope Mills, I thought it would only be appropriate to ask our Chief of Police, Chief of Charity, if he would take those two items and give him more or less an update or talk about what we are already doing that maybe our community's not aware of. So Chief of Charity, would you mind taking those two topics?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to participate. Hope Mills has been expanding its community relations for a number of years now. It's an ongoing process, started when we branched out into the social media atmosphere of it to better be able to reach out and have a connection with our citizens. We do a variety of things through our community police office. We do civic engagements, we do school demonstrations, we have the National Night Out. You see us over at the old mill days or on Halloween, as a matter of fact, with the trunk and tree. We are responsive to citizens when they contact us and ask for law enforcement to be present at their functions, if it's something that we can facilitate. We actively participate in the Citizens Academy for Hope Mills. It's a very informative block and so far, now of course, this year, we couldn't do it because of the pandemic. But in years past, it's been a very successful event. So it's an ongoing process, it's always, you're never done. There's always more that you can do. You should never think that you get to a certain point and go, well, I'm done, I've succeeded, we're all good. There's always something more that can be done. And that's usually on a case by case basis. Recently, we started participating in the Gold Leaf Program, a very promising program. So, you know, there's a number of things that you do to reach out and connect with citizens. Get the officers out of patrol cars into the public atmosphere. So that you have that part. The, the police initiative is eight can't wait, and I'm glad you highlighted that. Hold on just a second, I'll make sure. Very familiar with the eight can't wait. And when you read over them, anybody that has an open mind can tell you that there's some very reasonable things there. And they should not be dismissed outright. It's, most of the stuff is common sense. Startup number one, the ban chokeholds and the strangleholds. Well, we haven't authorized that for ever. Chokehold, strangleholds, all that good stuff. In order to properly use that, an officer has to be certified and trained on how to do it. If you are not trained and you're not certified on how to do it, yeah, you can kill somebody because you don't know what you're doing. We've never authorized that. Require de-escalation, we've been doing that for a number of years. It is not, the verbiage is not de-escalation. There's a very good block of instruction through the Justice Academy on verbal judo. It's the same thing. Excuse me. It's basically training officers to be able to communicate with the people they're dealing with in order to not have to get into a use of force situation and to hopefully get compliance. Once you can get compliance, then you can work on solving the problem. If everybody's all mad and yelling, nobody hears anybody. Quiet number three, require warnings before shootings. That's pretty standard, common sense stuff. Obviously, that isn't going to fit into every cookie cutter situation. And there's extensive training programs out there on that. Requires to exhaust all alternatives before shooting. We're kind of already doing that through our force options. And that's already been in policy for a number of years. Duty to intervene. Duty to intervene is another one of those common sense things that if you're on a call with another officer and you see that officer abusing somebody, you're going to intervene because if somebody's in custody, their, their well-being falls under your responsibility. That means you got to take care of them, you got to provide a medical attention if they're hurt. That kind of stuff. The ban shooting at moving vehicles, we've, we've never authorized shooting at moving vehicles unless somebody's life is in danger. That falls into the use of force continuum. Require use of force continuum. We've had that in policy at least in my, since the last update and prior to that, which our last update was in 2015. We don't say continuum, we say force options. But like I say, the verbiage might be a little bit different, but it's basically the same thing. The last one, require comprehensive reporting for use of force incidents. We've done that ever since I've been here. Any use of force requires use of force report. If you're using force, you're going to have a court date at some point, and that's going to come up as part of your court case. So that's been in practice for, I'd say, a number of years. So, and I can elaborate on any of those if anybody wants. But again, there's nothing over the top on any of these things. And I would be hard pressed to find somebody that had, that would have an issue with those. Maybe some of the verbiage, but it's, it's stuff that's basically, that's already been being done.
And Chief of Charity, I think it's important that you let them know that we do have body cams. And we actually had those as a police force in our area before others did. So that's again, something that we have, that we use to support what we do.
Yeah, we're, and thank you for bringing that up. We started implementing our body cam program back in, I want to say 2014. We're on our third iteration. The first generation was just terrible, to be honest. So we're trying to keep with, up with the technology. And as part of that, we've contracted with a company that actually manages the equipment, the data storage. It's much more user friendly now, much more easier to access and much more reliable. And they have been an invaluable tool for not only criminal prosecution, but on managing officers with their encounters. We do random audits regularly, just to do quality control checks. And all this is possible through the service we're using now.
Okay. Does anyone have a question or would have something they'd like to ask Chief of Charity?
Yes, sir, I have a quick question, and I want to thank you for always being very accommodating during the protests that we've had for the last month.
Thank you.
Is there any current punishment for officers who obstruct maybe their body cam for extended periods? Or do officers have the ability to turn their body cams off and on?
Excellent question. I actually get that a lot. We have in policy a mandatory use requirement. Any interaction that an officer is having with citizen member, enforcement action, anything of that nature, they're required by policy to use their camera. If we find that that has not been being done, yes, we do have disciplinary measures in place to address that. I am happy to say that at this point, to my knowledge, we have not had any issues where an officer has not used their body camera. Now, that being said, we have had issues with body cameras failing after prolonged use. The most recent comes to mind with our last hurricane. We had officers in the field seventeen, eighteen, twenty hours. And of course, our last hurricane was one with the protracted rain. It rained for like four days straight. The model that we were using then was actually a two-piece model. And after prolonged exposure to the elements, we found that the seals were failing and it would cause the camera to fail. We are now using the one-piece model, self-contained, there's no seal failure. We've been using these since we re-upped our contract. We've had no failure issues to date.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions for Chief of Charity? Chief of Charity, something else I'd like to mention is the opportunity that we played or we took the opportunity being part of ceasefire. I know that we didn't have this this past year, but we did have an opportunity to work with Fayetteville City Police. And we had an opportunity to have the movie and the night activities for the community. Would you speak on that also? Because that is something we've been involved with.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, we have been involved with that also for a number of years. That falls under our Community Police Division, which is run by Lieutenant Sumner, does a fantastic job. We have helped coordinate the movie nights, which gets families and people out of the, you know, out of the community and into a social setting where they can interact, interact with law enforcement, there's educational stuff. No, we haven't been able to do it this year because of obvious reasons, but it's always been very successful.
And I'm trying to help you toot your horn because I do know the other opportunity. When there was a situation with the, not having the SROs in our elementary schools and in our, in all of our schools. And we were concerned about that, that we did have an opportunity for our police officers to visit the schools and make sure that the principal and the people knew who they were. Could you speak a little bit about that and how you coordinated that? Or how we worked with the schools in order to show our support when they, they did have that lack of SRO in every school?
Well, sure. This actually came out of the issue that was going on with school violence, shootings and stuff of that nature. We've always been very concerned due to the large number of schools in our municipality. So we wanted to make sure that our zone officers were making contact with principals so they would know who they are, they see them on campus, they know it's one of our staff, we're in there, we're checking, is everything okay? Have you had any problems, stuff of that nature? The Sheriff's Department does a fantastic job. I can't say enough good stuff about them. But like everybody else, their resources are stretched incredibly thin. And so we want to make sure that we're part of a functioning team that can be relied upon should something, you know, should something happen and they need law enforcement assistance.
I guess which brings me to my next comment, and that is the fact that you do partner with and work very closely with the Sheriff's Department and the Fayetteville Police Department. Because we, I know that there's been times where they've come in and helped us with certain events. And I'm sure we've offered our assistance also. So I think we do have a very good working relationship with the other law enforcement officers. And I guess maybe you can tell a little bit more about that.
Sure. We've always had very good relationships with both our, our close partners. Fayetteville City Police has always been very helpful with us, as well as the Sheriff's Department. We have on occasion provided staff for large functions in Fayetteville. And they have in turn provided staff for us on occasion for like Fourth of July, stuff of that nature. We also have a standing mutual aid agreement with both the Sheriff's Department and Cumberland County. And that's pretty self-explanatory. If something is happening and we need extra people to manage it, take care of it, we can request staff from their agencies and vice versa. It's always been, again, don't want to beat a phrase, but it's always been very successful. Never had any issues with it.
Okay.
I can give a good example. If you'll recall the Danielle Locklear case. That was a very complicated case, required an exceedingly amount, large amount of territory to cover, which we don't have that many people. So we were able to use our mutual aid resources and bring in Sheriff's Department personnel, Fayetteville Police Department personnel, of course, we had the FBI Task Force here. And we were able to bring that to a conclusion by covering a lot of, a large amount of space in a short amount of time.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to ask a question or offer anything as far as the topic we were currently covering?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just would like to, once again, kind of piggyback off the young lady. She made a comment about chief's duties and commitment to the community. And when I came on board with the team, I was pretty much impressed with what I saw happening under the chief's leadership. And as he shared those eight items, initiatives of what have you, that, that impression of chief and his leadership, as well as yours, Madam Mayor, has been strengthened. I'm very proud to hear. I saw some things and I participated in some things. But I'm very proud to hear some of the things that I did not know that the department was doing. And I commend you, chief. God bless your life and, and I am just honored. And I know that Hope Mills will continue to thrive under this caliber of leadership with you, Mayor Warner, and you, chief. So thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, I just had one more quick question for, so what I heard you say, and for those of us who don't quite understand, you know, how the levels of law enforcement work. So you're saying that if any higher law enforcement, like state or federal, comes in to our town who don't necessarily follow the same protocols, every single time they will work with you? Like they will check in with you first and you all work in conjunction? Or is there a possibility that they could come in, you know, and enforce the law on our citizens without you knowing?
Excellent question. The simple answer is sometimes yes. You could have a, a federal officer coming to serve a federal warrant, as an example. Most of the time, they will contact us and we'll help them serve their warrant. But say you've got a sheriff's deputy driving down Hope Mills Road, okay? He observes a violation in front of him. He's well within his rights to take enforcement action. Sheriff's Department has jurisdiction throughout the county. I think that was what she was referring to, something like that. Now, if we call them in on a mutual aid request, we are still the controlling agency. They're coming in to help us. Just like if we go to Fayetteville, say they're having a big event and they ask, hey, can you send the squad down? And we will. They'll report to whoever their officer in charge is, and they'll follow his direction. And they're covered under the auspices of the mutual aid agreement and vice versa. But there has been, there's been very few times that I can recall that there's been an outside agency come into our jurisdiction without doing the courtesy of contacting the local jurisdiction, just like we do. If we're doing something, like right now, I have two teams out in the field outside of jurisdiction right now, working on a case. I have one in another county, I have one on the other side of Fayetteville. We contact the local jurisdiction to let them know, hey, we're here, we're doing this, this is your courtesy call to let you know. Now, the, the interesting thing about that, if we're going to take enforcement action, we have to have a representative from their agency come and help us with that enforcement action. As a Hope Mills law enforcement officer, I can't just go say I'm investigating a forgery and uttering, and the guy lives off of Skybow Road in Fayetteville. I can't just go and arrest him in Fayetteville. I have to have the Fayetteville officer meet me there and help me serve the warrant because it's in their jurisdiction and vice versa. Except if you're a sheriff's deputy because you have jurisdiction throughout the county. Did that answer it? Was I, okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have others? Question or have a comment? All right, the next item on agenda is, where do we go from here? In other words, what, what are we going to be doing next? And that's what this is all about. So I would ask some of the community. So, I would ask some of the community people that we have here that might have some suggestions or maybe want to just offer, or have questions for anyone that's here from Hope Mills. I'm looking for some of those, our community partners that might have a question or just want to say something.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and the rest of the individuals on the call. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission. We are by virtue of our ordinance and our memorandum of understanding with the, with the Cumberland County Government Commissioners, we are available to assist, again, any types of meetings where it's thought that a neutral party or an arbitrary party might, a neutral party, an objective party will be able to come together and then try to bring people together in the middle to discuss situations which may be tough, which may be tense, which may have a, have emotional context to it, especially in these times. We understand that sometimes it is, it's easier to invite in what's considered to be a neutral broker. And our, by virtue of the nature of the ordinance that establishes the commission, and I don't, I don't know if Vice Chair Olson is still on the line, if he is, I'd ask him to speak to this, but given the ordinance that we serve under, we are here to serve all the residents of this county. And this also includes collaboration with our local public safety agencies, whether it be Hope Mills Public Safety or whether it be Sheriff's Department, certainly Fayetteville Police Public Safety, whatever is required to bring people together in the middle because we find that the best solutions are usually somewhere in the middle of all the, all the positions and opinions offered. Somewhere in there is probably the place where we can come together and create a win-win. The commission has, in its membership, it has trained facilitators such as Vice Chair Olson, such as some of our people from, from both Fort Bragg as well as Pope Army Airfield, who are especially trained to, to handle issues where conflict resolution is necessary, to deal with issues where you have racial relations concerns or human relations concerns in general. And they're actually certified in these types of discussions. So, once again, we, we are happy, once again, to be invited to, to this discussion. We thank Mayor Warner. We certainly thank Manager Adams, City Clerk, Town Clerk, Jane Starling, just for extended invitation. And we, we are here to serve in whatever way local government and/or its residents deems appropriate.
Thank you so much. And I think it's so important that our community knows that we have this resource available. And I think this is what this is all about, is just to make people aware of the things that we do have that can help us if we need those resources. So, thank you so much for being here and being a part of it. Any other member of our community that would like to have, have to say anything at this time?
Yes, Mayor Warner, I'd like to also make mention of Mission Field Ministries. I'm the pastor there of the availability that many of, for the whole county, really, and surrounding counties. Every third Saturday of each month, we are giving free food, no questions asked. A lot of people are calling me now, but we want everyone to know that as Second Harvest and Action Pathways continue to provide some assistance to us, we will always be there for the community. So, any of, any of you that know anyone or families that'll be lacking in food or need some type of assistance, we're going to be there. And that is the designated day, which is the third Saturday of each month. But if there's an emergency, I have representatives that work with the American Red Cross. We will make exceptions. My number is widely used, 910-988-0795. And we're just on call. We, we love being here for people and we want people to know, especially the residents of Hope Mills, that there's a ministry, the station right there in Hope Mills that's available if they need some type of food or some type of assistance. And so, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and say this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And something that I want to mention on that opportunity too is that we have a pastors' coalition in Hope Mills. I feel very fortunate in that the churches ministers have a contact list for all of our pastors, but we have a group of pastors that stay in contact with each other on a regular basis, it's across all denominations. And they work closely with each other and come to our assistance when we need it. Pastor Wesley Holmes from Hope Mills Church of God leads that group. And of course Pastor Mathis is within that group and there's several other pastors that are involved. So, we do have that to help us when we do need to build some type of help or resource for our citizens and especially in times where there might be a need to cross those boundaries and have someone that can help with these types of relationships that we're, you know, that we're trying to work through. So, I appreciate the fact that our pastors are, are at the table with us also. Any other thoughts or any other input from anyone in reference to that topic?
Madam Mayor, before I go on, I see my Vice Chair is on the screen and, and Vice Chair Olson, I just talked about the Human Relations Commission's trained facilitators, some of which are members from Fort Bragg and Pope Army Airfield and our charter. And I didn't know if you had any additional statements along that line?
Honorable Mayor, yeah, if I could just double down on the volunteering that Dr. Wade did for the commission. And this is not uncharted territory for the commission. I've been with them for almost five years now. And a lot of what we're going through right now came up before with the market house in a much more quieter environment than what we're in right now. But we've had group, community, public discussions on that. We've had pretty much like a documentary and facilitated discussion in terms of understanding of our community and the world we live in. We talked about, we had one on the 13th Amendment and that documentary series, which was excellent. The History of Racism in America, The Hate U Give, which is more modern film, which applies very well to the environment that we're in. We had facilitated discussions on that. We've had some public dinner and discussion forums. Just, this is another, another opportunity, if you will, to test how good we are as a commission in a COVID-19 environment, to do this virtually. But we're up for the task. I mean, I think everyone's getting a little better at it. I can see this group is, are a bunch of veteran Zoomers like myself. But it, it works. I think it works very well. It's a little slower, it's a little more deliberate. You got to control it. But I think you can get a lot of value out of it when you see people's faces and you can see people's reactions to what the topic is at hand. And certainly, the commission is up for the challenge. I'm one of those trained military army guys with a couple of years on here, but I've, I've been through the required training at the Defense Equal Opportunity Management Institute down in Florida, much like Dr. Wade and many of the others. And you get a lot of value, whether it's a group of 20, whether it's a group of 40. We've had, I think the largest is about 80, live, but certainly you could do it even listening and get a lot out of it. So, I'll just offer that up since, since my boss already offered us up anyway. I'm just going to double down on that right now, Honorable Mayor. But that's really all I have. So, we've, we've done stuff like this before.
Okay. That comes, I guess, to our next agenda item, and that is do our community partners offer racial and equity or cultural sensitivity training? And I think that, you know, you've already stated that, that your own call is needed, but is there any, would it be appropriate for us to ask, would there be some type of training that we as a community might need? Anyone that wants to answer that, or is there anything that we could add to what we've already discussed?
I was, Madam Mayor, I was gonna, I'm sorry. I was gonna chime in at the end, but I first wanted to thank everybody, Chief of Charter, Mayor Warner, Dr. Wade, Mr. Olson, Pastor Mathis and everyone else in the community, Ms. Blue, the community members, for being a part of this discussion and certainly Senator Devi for helping to host this discussion. But I just felt like it was important to do this because I think every community in the nation is having this conversation right now. And I didn't feel like Hope Mills was exempt. And if you're doing great things, good things, I think that they can be great. And I love that Pastor Mathis is here and the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Committee is here because I have been to several of your trains, including the one that you did at FTC with the police officers and the community with Hate U Give. And so, I would certainly be interested. Actually, before this, this entire thing happened, I had already spoken with a couple of you about doing something here in Hope Mills and then COVID-19 and everything else happened. But I am interested in hosting and doing something like that in our community because I just feel like it's needed. I don't know if churches, a church would be interested in hosting it. I don't know how you do it in the COVID-19 environment. Perhaps we can host something with Zoom and we can start there. But I was certainly, I'm not afraid to talk about race and police reform. I'm a sociologist. I teach sociology and I teach these topics every day. So, I'm not uncomfortable talking about these things, but I'm sure there's a lot of people in our community that are. And I think that we need to have these conversations because I think that's one of the ways that we, that we grow. So, I would certainly be interested in hosting or having something that the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations could host. And if we could join in with some of our religious partners, I would be interested in doing that as well. And again, I just wanted to thank everybody that participated in this call.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, can I, can I chime in right quick?
Sure.
This is Pastor Dwight Neely. I'm so glad to be on this call. I run in the Senator Devi Austin. So, I'm glad to be on here with Honorable Mayor and everyone who's on. I, I'm on Legion Road, Rock Springs. I've been there about four years now. And I used to work in Raleigh, so I haven't been able to be involved as much as I want to because of time. But I work on Fort Bragg now, praise God. So, I don't have that drive and I'll leave that alone. So, here's something that I just want to bring up. I'm kind of like Mayor Pro Tim McCray. I'm comfortable talking about different things. And one of the things that I've been challenged with, I've been having Zoom meetings with the youth of my church discussing various things. And so, I, I don't know if this is more toward chief or to the mayor, but what, what can we do or what efforts are being made, maybe so that we can, my children are scared of the police. And most of my, I mean, I, I pastor Rock Spring African Methodist Episcopal Science Church. So, you know, we're predominantly black, right? And so, they see these videos and things of that nature and the conversation. And so, I'm constantly fielding their questions and their fears and confronting them and things of that nature. So, I'm wondering like, is there some kind of form or something we can do, a community-based activity, where it's kind of like more of a meet and greet or get some understanding, kind of like what we're doing now? But maybe, you know, I don't know those plans. I'm new to, to the group, glad to be here. But the children, they're, they're scared. They really are. And so, I'm like, well, you don't have to be scared. And they're like, well, maybe yes, we do. So, I'm like, well, there are these things out there. So, I'm just curious about what can we do in that regard? My church isn't the largest or anything like that, but it's definitely available to, you know, anything we can do to help ease tensions so we can have conversations and, you know, get some cohesion and, you know, deal with these uncomfortable topics.
I'll, I'll just go ahead and jump in here. Get up with me. You can, you can, if you'd hear, I'd give you my card, but obviously, and I am not a Zoom veteran, whoever said that earlier. This is all new stuff for me. But new stuff is good. It's good. It keeps you going. My contact information is on the town of Hope Mills website. We also have a Facebook page. If you give me your contact information, I can get you in contact with Lieutenant Sumner's. Wonderful guy. We can work something out. What you're saying is not uncommon. It's not unheard of. Two, three weeks ago, a young lady brought her child in. Child was absolutely terrified, terrified because all the child's friends at the daycare, preschool, whatever it was, was telling them the cops are going to kill you. That was a real thing. That's real conversations that's going on. Mom brought child by, so we could dispel that. And it's, it is conversations that have to be had. It is stuff that has to be approached because, one, that's the world we live in. And two, all these conversations started out from somewhere. Somebody had a horrible experience and they went home and told their friends, they told their friends, and then oh, the world, a video pops up and they go, wow, you weren't lying. Those guys were, insert whatever, verbiage. And that's something that everybody has to deal with. Let's take the most recent horrible from, from George Floyd. Okay. Saw the video. It was horrible. It's like watching a Nazi soldier on the neck of a Jewish in a concentration camp. It couldn't be more horrible than that. Absolutely not. Now, that's all the way across the country. What's it got to do with Hope Mills? We don't do crap like that, stuff like that. Well, we're in this. Everybody's associating that with everybody that's wearing this. And that's where the, the conversation absolutely positively has to start. Because, again, common sense, everybody knows that is not the function of law enforcement. That's not what we're there for. It's not what we do. But because it's out there and because it's, it's in the community and because it's bringing us to where we're at now, you can't not listen to stuff like this and you can't not address it because it ain't going to go away. And that's why it's so important to communicate, 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 communicate. If you're not talking, nobody's listening and everybody's getting mad. And if anybody that has known me for a while knows I have a million useless stories, I'll give you one more and then I'll hush up. Coming into work, this was late last year, before all the controversy started, right? I'm coming into work, pulling out of my neighborhood, car coming down Hope Mills Road, outside lane, cuts two cars off, cuts off in front of me, and I literally have to stomp on the brake so I don't hit the guy and kill him. Well, of course, I'm going to stop and find out what's going on, right? So, I did. And before there's even the conversation, before I'm even out of my, my vehicle, driver of the car cut everybody off and stopped, jumps out of the car, young black man. Immediately, I haven't even, I haven't even said anything. I hadn't even got out of my truck. Immediately gets out of his vehicle and assumes the position on the side of his car. He was absolutely terrified that he was going to die. That's a conversation that needs to be had. As a moving vehicle violation, it's nothing more than if anything was to happen, a ticket. That's nothing that somebody should be that terrified over. But that is the mindset that's out there because somebody, all the way across the country in a uniform like this, did something horrible. And that has to be addressed. And there's a lot of talking that has to happen with that. So, yes, please, get up with me. We'll, we'll work something out. I know it's challenging times in the world of COVID, but we can be pretty creative when we put our minds to it. And I hope that answered your question.
Yes, sir, Chief. I'll give you my information and get my, on an email you my contact because I had a situation on the way to a, on the way to a revival at a church. And I, I guess I didn't stop enough. I slowed down but didn't stop and I got pulled over. And this was about three years ago. And just transparency, I saw a small white female coming and I immediately thought about a situation my brother, who was 6'4", 290, had that he told me about that wasn't very pleasant. And so, down in Phoenix City, Alabama, I'm, the church is around the corner. I'm sweating profusely. I'm scared. I have my hands on the side. I'm like, oh God, what's getting ready to happen to me? So, yes, and nothing happened. She gave me a warning, but I was petrified and, you know, and, you know, so definitely, I look forward to communicating with you. And thank you, Mayor, for giving me this time. And Chief, I reach out through email and get my contact. And thank you, Mayor, for giving me this time. And Chief, I reach out through email and get my contact and I look forward to working forward with you.
Thank you. I look forward to talking with you.
And just know that with our pastors coalition, that would be a good opportunity for you to start getting with that group because so often they can share ways that things can happen too. And also there's an opportunity that we could, I've done several Zoom things with youth, especially Boy Scouts right now. So it could be something that even our police officer could do something along that lines along with you to share that, at least an opportunity if we can't work out something else during these times. But I do think that we need to focus on what we can do to make sure that we work through any type of concerns that our community has and, you know, and make sure our youth understand that our police are here to help them, not to harm them.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, thank you. Who should I start with as far as with the pastors coalition and Hope Mills?
Pastor Wesley Holmes. He's the pastor at Hope Mills Church of God. But Pastor Mathis is a member of that group. So Pastor Mathis that is on here with us now, he also could be a resource through his church. And his church is down on Black and Dead Road, which he mentioned a while ago. So that will be another, that will be a good contact.
Thank you so much. I'll work those connections. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, where we are as far as our discussion goes is that we can add anything to our agenda that we would like or we could just have a time for, or an opportunity for anyone that has any other questions that maybe we haven't answered or any more information that you would like. So is there anyone at this point that has anything that you would like to add to our conversation?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just would like to say, as Pastor Mission Field Ministries, the Mayor Pro Tim mentioned having a get-together and not really knowing how we may approach that. But I would like to say to Pastor Neely and Mayor Pro Tim and everyone that we would love to, for our facility to be considered to have this type of discussion. The Hope Mills leadership is doing a great job. And during this time, we all know that education is a very important thing. And we're going to need to do, have this get-together so people can know that here in Hope Mills, they're not dealing with the same thing that may be happening in some other state like what Chief was saying. But unfortunately, it's difficult for sometimes for some people to pretty much embrace that as truth. And so we have fear that'll come in, and I can pretty much say the same thing that Pastor Neely was saying. I've had my experiences too, but I've since pretty much put my foot on that because I realized for the very reason that Chief said, hey, look, I'm in Fayetteville and Hope Mills where this type of thing, it rarely happens. And so, but there's still a need because we're on the right path. There's a need to educate our people and we need to come together. So we're available for that. I just wanted to say the same thing.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I was also going to offer that per Mayor Pro Tim's comments that we've been, in the age of COVID, we've been looking at how to deploy the Hate You Give training, film screening, engagement session virtually as well as in person. And so if there's any interest in utilizing that particular option to further these types of conversations, then we'll certainly be willing to collaborate. When we were able to meet face-to-face, it was a very powerful experience. At the end, we were able to explore conversations that started off with police community relations that inevitably gone on, went on to deal with issues involving race, youth, family, implicit bias, explicit bias, et cetera. There were a number of ways, number of themes that we explored just through that in a non-threatening manner. And it also gave our police, who were important components of that discussion, it allowed for police and residents to interact kind of like in a safe zone where there could be questions that focused on the film that reflected what was going on in real life to include what we're dealing with right now, specific to the death of Mr. Floyd. So with that in mind, once again, we're trying to get our hands around that particular model. But I believe that we could have a discussion which might result in something that may be of value certainly to Hope Mills.
Okay. And I would like to just ask Dr. Wade and Mayor Pro Tim McCray and Pastor Mathis, and I would love to be a part of this too, is let's put a timeframe that we can sort of try to coordinate something. And I do believe as times change with social distancing, we could possibly do something on a smaller scale at Pastor Mathis Church with people making sure they, you know, do the things they're supposed to do. So it might be that we could work on doing something for our community. And I think, like you said, education, I think so many people don't know exactly what's going on in Hope Mills and what we are already working on and then adding what Dr. Wade can add and bring to the table. I think this would be a good thing, a way for us to move forward. So I do think that that's something our town would like to do. And I think I'm speaking for Dr. McCray, but I'd like to, you know, let her initiate this and I'd be more than happy to help her. But I do believe it's something we need to do.
And following your lead, certainly don't want to speak for my vice chair, but he has already referenced that he, as well as other members of the commission, are specifically trained to facilitate these type of discussions. It's one heck of a school they go through. How long was it, Vice Chair, for you? I know it was longer for me, but how long did you have you in training down there in Florida?
Eleven.
Eleven weeks.
Eleven weeks.
Yeah. So we've got several members of the commission who are trained professionals in this particular issue, in this particular methodology. And so I won't speak for them because as a department director, their staff liaison. But Commissioner Olson, Vice Chair Olson has already indicated the willingness to be involved in something like this. So I will defer to his leadership and just follow his lead.
Okay. Well, I want to go on record to thank everyone that's been here and been a part of this today. I did wish that there'd been opportunities for even more to participate. But those of you that were here, I think we've got some good information. Also believe that we've probably given an opportunity for people to know what is, what has taken place in Hope Mills in the times before the current situations. And if there's anyone that would like to speak any further, if not, we are at the end of our agenda. Unless, of course, is there someone else that would like to have a comment?
I just had a quick question for probably Chief. Thank you for addressing the eight-point strategy that clarifies a lot of things. And I just had two last quick questions. So where do we stand with no knock warrants? You know, could an officer ever enter somebody's home without announcing themselves as an officer? Because that wasn't really clear. I didn't see anything against that in the statute. And then also, does Hope Mills Police train on citizens who may have mental health issues? Because one of the ladies that I protest with, her African-American son, he's autistic. And she's very concerned that he could be in the wrong place at the wrong time and get approached by an officer and he wouldn't be able to, you know, appropriately respond and may be a victim of, you know, unnecessary force.
Okay, yeah. And that's, excuse me, excellent question. And yes, we do train, probably not at the level that I would like. Dealing law enforcement, dealing with mental health issues is a, it's, I don't want to take anything away from it by saying it's a complicated subject. It's, there's a lot that goes into individual officers, their individual capabilities, and being able to read and interpret an individual's medical condition. We can train them on what to look for and how to best react. Obviously, if somebody's having a mental health crisis, there's generally a substantial risk of injury to somebody. And so those are very difficult to deal with. We do our best to get the person who is suffering under control so they can't hurt themselves or anybody else. We do it through various methods, through various common techniques. If it's something that's physical, we have various restraint devices to where they can't hurt themselves or anybody else. It's something that we do deal with, like involuntary commitments. If you have a family member who is unfortunately a threat to themselves or to others, the family member can go down to the magistrate's office, get involuntary commitment papers. Those require us to go and pick the person up, take them to the hospital. Those are never good to deal with. I, long-term, and as we go through the journey of what law enforcement needs to be involved in and doesn't need to be involved in, obviously, that's going to need to be one of the topics. You take a young officer who's 24, 25, right out of the academy. They go through all their FTO stuff. These are not the people that need to show up at somebody's doorstep that's having a mental health issue. They will go and they will try and manage as best they can. But that is something where somebody who is a professional needs to be involved with it. And that's something that's going to have to be talked about also. So in answer to your question on that, no. The only way that there would be a use of force issue is if the individual was having a crisis to where they might hurt somebody. They're breaking stuff. They're assaulting somebody, something of that nature. And even then, your use of force can, I won't say continue, we verbalize it as options is going to kick in. And you'll go through those before you get to something that's more dramatic. We've never had that issue. As far as the no-knock warrants, no-knock warrants, yes, you can do them. We don't, we haven't used no-knock warrants that I'm aware of. It is an option that's out there. Usually, a no-knock warrant is when you're dealing with narcotics or somebody that has firearms, weapons. You've got a bank robber that's hiding at XYZ house. And he had all kinds of weapons when he robbed the bank. You're not going to stand on the door, at the door, and knock on the door and let the guy that's been shooting at people know that the police are out front. You're going to probably go and do a no-knock warrant. But average officer is not going to do that. You're going to probably go and get a specialized team to go in and do that. We've never had to employ that, but it is, it is out there. And it is something that is available, if that answers your question.
Okay.
Mayor Warner, before you ended, I just, if you give me a couple of minutes, I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Okay.
And I appreciate the conversation tonight. I think it's important. And again, thanks to Mayor Pro Tim for initiating it, and we're glad to be a part of it. I would encourage you, I was out in Hope Mills for one of the peaceful protests by one of the younger activists in the community. And she did it right. She was organized. She coordinated. And so I would just encourage you as a community, as you move forward, to engage the younger voice because this, you know, right now, this is the moment that we're seeing this generation truly step forward. And they've made it clear that they don't intend to live in a world where there's inequalities or denied justice like generations before them have seen. So I think it's extremely important that we include them in the conversation right now because we're at this moment and a lot of people are uncomfortable saying it. And I think that's a big piece of the conversation that communities need to have. And Mayor Warner, you're right. I've been involved in several of these conversations around the community. And I've tried to listen more than I talk, which is what you saw me do tonight. But we're at this moment in this community, in this state, in this nation because of senseless killings. Senseless killings of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and many others. And so this generation that is standing up now is demanding change. And I would encourage us not only to look at the justice inequalities that we see when we talk about police accountability and some of the reforms that should happen and those discussions around that. But I would encourage us also to look at the inequalities that we see day in and day out in our communities and across our state. I am committed to standing against those inequalities, working to change the systems that have put those inequalities in place for years. And as community members, as elected officials, I am willing to work with each of you how we can change some of those systems to ensure that we have a more fair and just state as well as community. But I will tell you that, you know, for those of you that may be listening on Facebook or on this call, you know, I believe we're at a different moment in time. This is not a time where people are just going to move on to the next shiny penny that's on the ground. There, people are committed to change. So I believe we truly have to have conversations. And while it's important to talk about all the positive things that are happening, it's also important to get uncomfortable and to put, me as an elected official or other elected officials or people that have the ability to change systems to make us uncomfortable. Because when that uncomfortable conversation truly happens and you truly open your hearts and you have those hard conversations, change can and will happen. So I just want to encourage you to push yourself to that uncomfortable position. Push yourself to have those difficult conversations that give you that queasy feeling in your stomach. And then look for the answers and find coalitions that you can build together and make those changes. Look, I know we have changes we have to make at the state level. I stand ready to make them. We've got a list of about 17 different things that I would love to bring legislation on right now. But because of the way the system and the situation is currently set up in Raleigh, I'm not able to do that. And hopefully, we'll get an opportunity to do that. But at the local level, I just encourage you as you move forward, and I would hope that these conversations will continue, that you talk about the uncomfortable things and you engage this generation that is standing tall and committed to seeing justice and the inequalities not go forward in future generations. So again, thank you for having this. We're glad to be a part of it. I stand, and my office stands ready to be a resource anytime that we can. You can see on my screen, all our contact information is there. And we stand ready to help and be a part of anything that we can be a part of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much for being a part of our meeting. And I would like to also thank our town staff that is a part. So I thank Town Manager Adams and Mayor Pro Tim McCray for being a part. And again, I thank everyone that has been here this evening or this afternoon. And just know that we're going to move forward with some of these ideas and get uncomfortable. I think that's the key from this is we need to educate and we need to get uncomfortable with what we're doing so that we know we can make a better place and not only just for Hope Mills, but hopefully to encourage that for all of Cumberland County in our state. But again, if there's not any more comments, I'd like to thank everyone. And at this time, we will adjourn our meeting.
Thank you. The livestream's off. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate y'all's help.
Thank you. Thank you so much for facilitating this.
For sure. We'll make sure you guys get a copy of the recorded event.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. I'll touch base with you.